I'll call the meeting to order. If everyone could please rise for the pledge. Over here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. We are missing Mr. Boglioli this evening, but all other board members seated at this time are in attendance. Do I have any announcements before I move forward with the agenda?
I do have one announcement. The legislative team of the Erie County School Boards Association is hosting a legislative breakfast on Saturday, February 9th. I have a copy for everyone. It's, they're gonna do two of them, one for the North towns and one for the South towns. Ours would be at Williamsville East High School. It'll be Saturday, February 9th from 8:30 to 11:30, and they're gonna invite our state legislators and senators. And so it'll be early in the budget season, and there's no cost to attend. There's an email there if you wanna register for that. They're inviting all board members and superintendents if they're available to attend.
Thank you. Anything else announcement-wise before we get going? All right, we have a unique item on the agenda this evening. We all, in front of us, have a resolution that we're gonna have a vote on here in light of Mr. Fiskus' resignation from the board to take on the superintendent role in Oakfield, Alabama, school district in December. The board has met and decided to appoint a prior board member, Ms. Mary Ellen Claus, to fulfill the vacancy, which will take place through May 21st of 2019, which is immediately following the next election. So with that being said, if I could get a vote of the board to seat Mary Ellen before the start of the meeting this evening.
Motion.
Motion?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to seat Mary Ellen.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Welcome back. All right.
It's like you never left.
All right, now down to the formality. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda for this evening?
Some move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's carried. All right, we have in our packet the Board of Ed meeting minutes and from public as well as executive session from the December 10th meeting. If there's no comments, questions, concerns, can I get a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's carried. We have no correspondence in our packet this evening. And I'm not aware of any unfinished business at this time. Does any board member have anything to raise? Okay. With that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Hicks for the superintendent's report.
Did you want public comment first?
Oh, I'm sorry, I glossed right over that. We have two public comment sessions this evening, the first of which is now. We have one a little bit later on in the agenda. Does anybody have anything to address the board on at this point? If you do, we have two microphones. Seeing none? We'll wait till the second session. Thank you.
Okay. We have two items during the superintendent's report tonight. The first is Ms. Coggins, the principal at Clarence Center, and students from Clarence Center are going to give us a spiffy presentation on the recess room.
Can you guys see us from here? I actually have some helpers from the middle school as well, and I'll explain why they're here. Over about two years ago, I was walking around in the winter, and it was pretty muddy out. And the playground was pretty much unusable at that time. There was no snow. So they really were stuck inside. And one of our fifth grade teachers at the time, who has since retired, Ms. Wyatt, was walking down the hall with her kids on the way to the gym. And I said, "Where are you headed?" And she said, "Oh, when the weather's like this, I bring them to the small gym." So it got me thinking, and I was trying to figure out what could we do for the kids on these cold miserable days, which sometimes are longer than the nice ones, to get them wiggling and moving during recess time. So I started brainstorming, and I came up with the idea of a recess room. So I spoke with the faculty about it at one of our faculty meetings, and I also brought it up to our parents at our PTO meeting. And within, I wanna say, two days, I had parents saying, "Hey, I'm cleaning out, you know, the kids' playroom, I'm doing X, Y, and Z. Could I donate my games for this recess room?" I said, "Oh, boy, this room's gonna happen before I know it." Shortly after the faculty meeting, Mrs. Gordon called me, and she said, "You know, my daughter, Ally, is a sophomore in the Iroquois Central School District, and she's looking for a gold project for her Girl Scouts. And would this be something you'd be willing to let her take on as part of her Gold Scout project?" And I said, "Sure, let's talk and see what that's gonna be about." So I sat with Ally a number of times, and we kinda brainstormed what I was thinking for a recess room, what she thought a recess room might be. And she wrote a grant to our PTO and got about, I wanna say, $1,500 towards building the room. And so she sat down with her plans, I looked at them, we verified them, and she built that recess room, or at least gathered all the materials the summer of 2017. In October of 2017, we were able to open the recess room. She did a video for all the kids to see if they wanted to watch it about how to use the recess room. And we were really excited to get it going. One of the gold project requirements, from what I understand, is the project has to be sustainable. I'm looking at our Girl Scout troop leaders over there, and they're all shaking their heads. So we were trying to figure out, well, how do we keep this going? And I wanna say Mrs. Boglioli was walking through the building randomly. She was our former PTO president and parent in our building. And I was telling her about the recess room, and she was like, "Hmm, we might be able to do something." So that's how the Girl Scouts are here. This is Sophie Ducat and Clara Boglioli. So their troop did some work. And then I'll let them explain a little bit about what they did. And then it also then led to my fourth graders, who are part of the Girl Scout troops, and they've taken it on too. So this recess room has been great with the new guidelines for recess that we're using as a district. It's also continuous from, you know, working with the community and ownership of Clarence Center kiddos as well as alumni. So at this point, I'm gonna introduce Clara and Sophie, and they can give you a little bit about what they did, and then we'll turn it over to my fourth graders.
Hi, I'm Clara Boglioli, and this is Sophie Ducat. We're from Clarence Girl Scout Troop 30630. We're both in eighth grade and graduated from Clarence Center Elementary.
When it came time to complete our Silver Award, we worked with Ms. Coggins to help her add to the recess room. There were still a few things that she thought would be good additions to the existing offers.
We met with Ms. Coggins to assess what the recess room had and what it could still be added. We decided on two different stations. My group worked on crafts for a cause. Each month, the kids get a craft project to complete, and then they are mailed to different charities like Meals on Wheels and Valentine's Rovers. This is an example of one of the projects they've completed.
My group added a STEM area to the room with 21 different STEM projects. An example would be the game 24, where you take different numbers. You have to multiply, add, subtract, or divide them to get to the number 24. They include making parachutes out of tissue paper, a game that teaches making changes from purchases and making a gondola that travels down a zip line. They are all age-appropriate and help develop science, technology, engineering, and math abilities.
Each of us spent more than 50 hours completing this project. We planned meetings, did research, developed STEM and craft projects, completed project samples, wrote instructions, and set it all up in the recess room. It was a lot of work, but definitely a lot of fun.
But helping to enhance the recess room was a perfect way to combine earning our Girl Scout Silver Award with helping a school we both love. And now there's a Clarence Center Girl Scout troop helping you too. These fourth graders are going to tell you about how they helped.
My name is Megan, and we are here in Girl Scout Troop 31014.
My name is Charlotte. We are here to tell you how we have been a part of the recess room.
My name is Ellie. We are in the process of working towards our bronze badge, which ties into our recess room here at school.
And my name is Julia. We are excited that we are able to help be a part of the recess room and follow in the footsteps of the girls who earn their Silver and Gold awards.
This fall, our troop leader met with the middle school leader, who did the charity crafts and STEM activities with the girls who are now in middle school.
We brainstormed how we can help sustain this great place for us to play on cold and rainy days.
We also met with Mrs. Gordon, who told us all about her daughter, Ally, and how she built the room from nothing.
We decided as a troop that we would take on the responsibility of setting it up in the spring. We will help pack it up in the summer, for the summer.
We also are planning to keep the charity craft center supplied and continued from year to year. I especially like the moon sand.
As a student here at school, the recess room has been important to me because it gives us a chance to play outside of our classrooms when it's cold out. My favorite part is when we can play outside with our friends.
And I love when we can spend time at the charity craft.
As a new student here, I like rainbow looms, and I am glad we can help be a part of the recess room so kids of all grades can use it in the years to come.
So since you can't see the kids in action in the recess room, we put together a little video, so I'm gonna have the girls just step away from the TV screen for a moment. And you can just see some of our kids playing and the type of things that they do. When teachers want to use the recess room, all they have to do is log into the staff portal. We created a technology Clarence Center page so teachers can sign out the recess room for 20 minutes. Some of our grade levels have also done alternative to birthday treats, and instead of bringing a food item, they can pick an alternate activity. So a lot of the kids like doing two recesses in one of the recess rooms, one being a recess room choice. So the volume on the video's a little funny, so I'm gonna put the microphone down and kind of do a little volume control the best that I can. Getting the kids to talk about it was funny. Why do you like it? It was fun, it was fun, it was fun. That was pretty much the theme. But the video that you saw included kids in kindergarten, second grade, and fifth grade. So depending on the grade, everyone has something to do. You can kind of tell what the favorite spots are by going in there. So this is, we're going into our second year of having it, and it's just a nice alternative when we can't get outside. So I don't know if you have any questions for me or any of the girls that helped create it or play in it.
Good job. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Coggins. Great job, Clarence Center. I know Dominic wants to go to that little dance, dance video, don't you, Dominic? Okay, the second item on the superintendent's report is Mr. Mancuso giving the board a scheduled update of our safety initiatives for this year.
So the district has had, through New York State mandates, a district-wide safety committee. And this year, we asked everyone from the Safety Task Force to join that committee. And probably half the members of the task force did join the committee, which worked out real well. The committee gives a voice to and a way to implement a lot of the items that were talked about at the task force committee level and at this committee. I did highlight seven items, that's a combination of the committee and the task force initiating. And I thought, just very briefly, I can kind of go over the status of each of them. We are, right now, meeting with the troopers and the sheriffs to give them camera access to the buildings. Should there be an emergency? It would be nice if, when somebody is dispatched, somebody else at the dispatch spot is actually able to view the building. And as you know, inside and outside, basically all of our areas have cameras now. The outside, I'm sorry.
Just ask as you go along with regards to, so we have not implemented this yet? That's correct?
No, we're meeting with them to get them the access right now.
And then is there any concerns relative to bandwidth or internet with delays to make sure that what they see is really real-time like this?
That's part of what we're meeting with their tech guys, but our IT guys are saying that they feel that it's gonna truly be instantaneous. Yeah, real-time. You may notice, if you go to each of the buildings, there are door numbers on the outside of the buildings that are very small. So we are, we have ordered the larger door numbers, and we will, this summer, complete all the doors and all the room numbers so that anyone approaching the building can see the room number from the outside and the door number. We are still working with the town to recruit some SRO backups for needed vacation times and things like that. Dave Bissinette, the town emergency coordinator, has already hit a couple of our buildings and is scheduling the incident command system updated training for every single faculty and staff member at every building. Is also going to meet with the administrative staff at some point and probably begin an active shooter drill that will be done into next school year. It takes quite a bit of planning to get all the police and responding agencies together. The door monitors, right now they have an iPad that they're buzzing in people. Really, the best way to do it is to have a hard-wired buzzer. And we got the iPad solution as a temporary fix so that we could see right where those people should be. Now that each one of them has ordered their unit and their station, and we know where they're gonna be, we are going to begin initiating the hard wiring for those. We did order Stop the Bleed kits for every single room in the district. I think there, I think we've got about a two-week delay for the first order to come in. But then they'll start to come in, and we'll send them out to each of the buildings. The unit notification system. January 2nd, a letter was sent out to everybody telling you how to go on the parent portal, and you could input a number that you can get a text or an email, multiple numbers, multiple emails, so that when we do have an emergency of any kind, whether it's a true, serious emergency or other information that we need to get to people, you can get it instantaneously again. The nice thing about the new system, it is very granular. So you can actually send it out by bus, by classroom. So it can go to that level, should there be some need. The committee still has, and I actually forgot the date of it, but we do have another meeting in a few weeks, and the committee will remain active. And at each subsequent board meeting, I will report back to you.
Any questions for Rick?
Yes. So the high school had a Stop the Bleed training. I don't know if any other building did.
Not yet. Just the high school, so far.
Yeah, April 12th, our staff development day. All teachers, all remaining teachers will participate in that training. Yep.
A little bit off the, on the same topic, but not something you covered. A year ago, we had a conversation around, you know, are we getting in the requisite number of drills, the lockdowns, et cetera? Are we on pace to where we should be this year?
Yes, we require the principals to fill out a form that they sent to me by December 1st, listing all the drills that they do. I may have this wrong, but I think they have to have four lockdowns and four fire drills as a minimum by December 1st. They've all done that. And then there's an additional drills that have to be done between December 1st and the end of the school year. And we have made the commitment, and each building has already exceeded the minimum done.
Thank you.
Okay, so that concludes the superintendent's report. Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Hicks. With that, I guess, move into the finance section.
There's not too much. I just wanted to highlight, I did attach the bus purchase plan for this coming year. No decision has to be made on that at this time. At the March board meeting, we'll ask you to approve the notification that has to go in the paper that says we're voting on the budget to trustee seats. And at that time, we will ask you to include a bus resolution in there. Again, the bus resolution is permissive if we do vote on it. And if it does pass, still after that, you still have the opportunity to, in essence, either approve the funding at the June meeting or not.
Rick, go ahead.
Question. I think I understand it, but it said some buses have compartments and some don't. Is that?
Yes, storage compartments.
Okay.
So we didn't wanna just blank it and order all of them with the compartments 'cause, to be honest, for the number of buses that we need with them, you know, we don't want to just waste the extra money. And not even just long distance, but if you're taking musical instruments and athletic equipment, yes. The other thing I did wanna mention is, we did put the rifles out to bid. We didn't have anyone bid on them. So I did list the options for the board, but at the next meeting, I'll give you a little more detail on each of those options, so you know what we would have to do.
Question. Would the, if someone wanted to bid, would they have to buy them all, or could they buy individual?
They, we would want them, in a perfect world, to have bid on the whole thing, but they're allowed to bid on an individual unit. And that's how we listed it in the specifications.
So we had no one bid. You'll review the legal options with, you know, the considerations with donations, soliciting, an actual direct sale, et cetera, at the next meeting.
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions on the financials? If none, can I get a motion to approve items F1 and F2? Done?
Six.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Personnel, back.
So instructional personnel, you have a few items before you, including approval of the extracurriculars, specifically the spring sports program. We will be bringing this to you one more time next month because we did just receive a resignation the other day, and so we'll have to fill a middle school modified position at that time. Academic intervention services for Harris Hill, spring curriculum projects, and additions to the substitute teacher list.
Any questions on items P1 to P3 at this time? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve?
Some move.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries. Non-instructional?
Non-instructional, you have resignations, including one for the purposes of retirement, a change in status for one day a week, an additional hour of work, various requests for leaves of absence. For the most part, they're medical leaves of absence. Various appointments, including school monitor, teacher aides, senior clerk typist, laborer, a couple cleaners, as well as a bus driver, and modifications to the substitute teacher list. We have both additions and deletions.
Charlie, one question. On the family support center, is that a 10 or 12-month position?
It's a 10-month position.
Any other questions? Can I get a motion to approve P4 to P8? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries. Dr. Hicks, special needs and student activities?
There were 23 school-age meetings and 13 preschool meetings, and these really are the earliest annual reviews of mostly out-of-district kids.
Questions? If none, can I get a motion on items 1 and 2?
Some move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries. All right, we have a number of board development.
First, in board development, we're recommending the adoption of a brand-new sexual harassment policy to follow the recently released guidelines of the federal government and New York State. We're also asking, because we're working through training with the faculty and staff, that the board waive the 30-day requirement for first read and adopt the policy tonight.
So just to be clear, we need a motion to waive and then a motion to approve?
Yes.
I guess, given what is in front of us, the desires to have it out there and the fact that law would trump our existing policy anyways, I think I would support the waiver. If the board is in support of that, could I get a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So we're waiving. Do we now need a formal approval?
Yes.
So now can I get a motion to actually approve policy number 6121?
Some move.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that is approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Second for the first read this month is the 7,000 sections of the board manual. This is the largest chunk of policies. I think there's someplace in the neighborhood of 35 or 40 policies here. So there's a lot to digest. You may wanna give it a couple of months to be able to look all the way through it. But in our ongoing effort to update our policy manual, this is the big one.
I wanted to make a suggestion that we can look through the whole section, or all of the sections, but if we can focus our time maybe on the first three, the 71, 72, 73s, that way, maybe the next time we meet, we'll be able to make some headway.
And that way, we can, if we stick to task, we can get through it in two additional meetings to get through both sections. Wake it up.
Greg.
Before, send any suggestions to yourself, which you'll reflect back into our next review. Right before, send any suggestions to yourself, which you'll reflect back into our next review.
There are three field trips, well, two field trips and a competition that we're asking the board to approve tonight. The first trip is for the Model UN Club to go to Washington DC from March twenty-first to the twenty-fourth. This is an annual trip that's taken. There are twelve students, one advisor for this particular trip. The second trip is the music competition for the Northeast All Eastern Orchestra. There's just a couple of kids who made the grade to do that particular endeavor. That's from April fourth through the seventeenth, I think, one teacher and a couple of kids to that particular trip. And then the third trip is the biannual band now slash chorus, big soiree in Disneyland in Orlando, Florida, which you've approved in the past. So, three trips.
The only thing I did want to mention is, on the Washington trip, the paperwork that you have, it had the insurance through an agency was pending, and we did receive that, so that is all set.
And it's mandatory that they, the students?
We're requiring them to.
That makes sense.
Any questions on those three items, B3 to B5? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve? Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Approved. With that, comes to our second public comment session of the evening. If anybody has something for the board, approach the microphone with name and address. All right. Well, thank you. All right, so with that, the board has in our packet two schedules of upcoming events, scheduled upcoming meetings. We have, the next board meeting will be our first budget study session of the year that will be held at the Clarence High School Lecture Hall, seven o'clock on Monday, January twenty-eighth. Our next regular board meeting will be February eleventh, and that will be located at Sheridan Hill Elementary at seven as well. Unless there's anything else from members of the board, I would entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment history of a particular person and to discuss collective bargaining with the Clarence Administrators Association.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.